So we're going to start tonight. We're going to start with a public comment on any items that aren't otherwise. Later for hearings. Is there anybody here tonight that would like to speak? Okay, if I could ask, if you could just come up to the podium. Name and address.
Hi, my name is William Hurley from 43 Eastern Ave. The first question I have is, I kind of got this from the Gazette, that tonight we were going to be able to give public comment about some of the changes regarding the zoning possible change within the city. Is this the correct format? Is this?
It is, just not right now. You can't listen to anything in this public, in this section of the hearing that's pertinent to anything we're going to hear later. So that's scheduled for 7:30.
Okay, so just sit tight till 7:30.
Sit tight till 7:30 and then you'll get your.
Coffee.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Help yourself.
Anybody else here for a public comment on anything other than what we're going to discuss later? No? Okay, our first item of business tonight is slated for 7 o'clock. Site plan for a temporary school building and extended curb cut for drop off at the Montessori School of Northampton. 51 Bates Street, Northampton, map ID 25A-6. And Peter's got.
Did you get staff analysis?
Yes. Did you get?
It's different. Not dramatic.
There are some minor changes regarding concerns the DPW had, and we got that list today. We made all the revisions, eight copies, and those are new. They're minor, and I can go over those shortly.
Berkshire Design Group I'm working with at Smith College, so I'll need to recuse myself.
Okay. Do you have short ones that have plans over there? Do you have short ones that have plans?
Okay. Can you make sure I get that back? Because I didn't get a chance to.
Okay.
Yep.
Once again, my name's Peter Wells. I'm with the Berkshire Design Group. We've been working with the Montessori School with regard to changes and improvements to their campus for the past year. Tonight, we would like the planning board to consider amending a permit that was obtained back in the 90s with regard to their addition then. We have other improvements that we want to make to the campus that will provide a more pedestrian-friendly campus and create some additional classroom space. For those of you that don't know the site, it's 1.6 acres, housing approximately an 8,000 square foot school. With that comes a parking area that houses 42 parking spaces with what I would call an inadequate drop-off area for students. The parking lot itself is also somewhat narrow in terms of regular-sized parking lots, so backing in and out is an issue and a concern by both teachers and parents. There's a generous playground in the rear of the site. This is the existing condition. Industrial Drive, Bates Avenue, this is their existing parking area. There's two curb cuts. The playground area is in back of the site itself. It's screened and buffered generously to the north and the south and east. Coca-Cola is to the east. Montessori asked us to do a number of different things. The first was to create a safer vehicle and pedestrian environment, mainly at the drop-off area and parking. They wanted us to look at housing a temporary classroom in a location that would not drastically affect the site plan, but one that was in a location that was close proximity to the school itself, easy access for children to go back and forth, and one that didn't take up too much of the playground area, which is near and dear to the school. There's also some drainage issues throughout the site that we are going to also address. Puddling in the rear where kids and teachers exit, and some small puddling area around the turnaround. And thirdly, they wanted us to really create a more inviting entrance area. Right now, it's overgrown with shrubs and an ornamental tree. It's not easy access direct into the entrance of the school itself, so they wanted us to create a more pedestrian-friendly and inviting entrance plaza, if you will. This is a rented site plan that we submitted. There have been a number of small changes that I will go over once I present the plan Starting with the existing drop-off area, we are removing it, removing one curb cut and a small drop-off area that occurs here. In its place, we're creating an entrance plaza, which will be concrete, poured-in-place concrete, benches, a nice planting area for a focal tree, which we've selected a tulip tree, Lirio dendrum tulipifera, quite a nice tree, not planted a lot, but a strong focal tree. We have moved two existing parking spaces that actually were non-conforming. They were on, they were within eight feet of the property line. Ordinance says that you parking areas should be at least eight feet away from the property line, so we pushed those back into the parking lot and created buffer and green space. So one were to come in now and basically park like that. We've moved the accessible parking spaces. Right now, they didn't even line up with the ramp that accesses the school, so we moved them so the accessible spaces are directly at the base of the ramp. We created a better circulation pattern within the existing parking area by basically moving the chain-link fence that runs along the playground, in between the playground and parking, roughly 42 inches into the site. And what that allows is cars to park and have an overhang of 42 inches, thereby the back portion of the car is not sticking out into the aisle way. It's not adding more impervious surface, but it's creating a friendlier parking area in terms of turning around. It's not a large improvement, but it is an improvement, and I think will be noted by people that use the parking area often. We've, since we're taking away our drop-off area, which really can only house maybe a car and a half because it is so small, we've located a drop-off area along Bates Avenue. We've met with DPW with regard to attempting to do this for their feedback. They had no issues with it as long as we complied with city standards in terms of construction. So we have a 10-foot-wide drop-off area off of Bates that can house seven cars versus the one and a half to two cars that exist there now. Coupled with that, we have a five-foot-wide concrete sidewalk with benches for kids that are waiting to be picked up, and the sidewalk connects directly into the new entrance plaza and with easy access right to the front of the building. Adding this pavement, right now, this site slopes somewhat, so we added a small catch basin at the end of the loading area that will provide positive drainage, and there won't be any puddling or icing. Ned Huntley from DPW agreed with that in terms of creating a safer drop-off area. We are proposing the concrete sidewalk to extend across the entranceway. That was a request from the planning department rather than just go with painted lines, so this will be a different material, concrete. There will be rumble strips on each side, tactile warning strips. We've added additional tactile warning strips in response to planning department's concerns and also DPW's. So we have a curb cut here, a curb cut there, tactile warning strip before the bike trail even. So it creates a really nice link for people that are biking, both to the school but also onward. We've added a bike rack also located in this area, and it really creates a really nice entranceway that is both easier for cars and for people to maneuver. The temporary classroom, and it will be temporary, is a roughly 2,100 square foot classroom that will house two classes. We have a precast concrete walkway that curves in to a system of steps and accessible ramp, two doors for two different classrooms, two bathrooms inside, two exits in the rear. And we located it there to be far enough away from the play area, close enough to the school, so it's not a tremendous distance, far enough away from the existing sugar maple, so that will be saved. Trees are really important in this space back here because kids are playing there often, and rather than have people made shade structures, the trees are doing quite well, and they're maintained well. They're checked on each year by arborists, and they're really, they're near and dear to the school. Beside that, as I mentioned, the precast concrete pavers will be installed on sand, so they will be somewhat impervious. I've shown shots of the tulip tree that will be installed at a four-inch caliber, which is about twice the size of the standard trees that are installed now. Detectable warning strips will have signage throughout. The existing sign is going to be relocated and moved back slightly. There will be signage for parents in terms of directing them that this is just a drop-off area, not a parking area. Teachers will be out here during drop-off times also. And times that it is somewhat busy in terms of vehicles is 45 minutes in the morning and 45 minutes in the afternoon. We haven't increased the amount of parking. We had the same amount of parking. I know the application that we submitted, there was an increase of one or two. We lost those by moving the parking area into the site itself, complying with current There will be signage in terms of directional signage, but not much. This is a two-way entrance and exit. There'll be signage for the accessible spaces. I'd like to also go over the memorandum that we received this afternoon and changes that we had time to make and resubmit. I don't know if you guys have copies of this or not, but I'll go through them. General, the plan should be stamped by a Massachusetts Registered Professional Engineer. I submitted a plan that was stamped by our PE, and we will be submitting stamped plans for building permits later on. They asked us to change the proposed drain pipe from a HDP, which is the plastic, to a RCP, which we've done on the plans. We've included a catch basin detail with a four-foot sump. They were concerned about how gentle this slope is along here, and as long as the gutter line flow is maintained, there will be proper drainage. So we put a note on our drawing to maintain gutter line flow to new catch basin to get proper drainage through here. The paving detail was altered slightly to increase an inch or so of, or half an inch of bituminous, and changed the gravel base slightly. Snow removal from the pull-out area or drop-off area will be maintenance that will be done by the school. Maintenance and repair of the curbing along here will also be done by the school, and that was a condition that was agreed upon back when I met with the DPW months ago. They wanted a curb ramp installed at this curb cut, at this on walkway, crosswalk, so we installed that on our side as an addition. Tactile dome indicator shall be called out and installed in this area, and a new curb cut in this area, which we have included on our plans. And lastly, the DPW recommends that a pedestrian crossing sign meeting the current city standard be installed at the crosswalk across Bates. The sign, the DPW will install the sign. They're asking for us to pay for it, so we have agreed to that. Those were the concerns the DPW had. As I mentioned, planning department had some comments earlier that we've added to these plans. The plans have two revision dates, as you noted on the plans. One was from revisions that the planning department asked us to do, and the other was from the DPW today. The planning board asked us for their concrete crosswalk to be installed, and we've done that. They asked us to move the parking area back, which we've complied to, and I don't recall what else was asked for, Wayne, but I know we answered all of it.
Yeah, save the sidewalk a little bit to.
Oh, yes. Add a little bit of sidewalk in hopes of heading on Lincoln. Someday to the industrial park.
Question, were the comments by the DPW, was the plan approved pending?
All these items being met, or is it rejected, resubmit with all these items being applied or addressed?
They already made the recommendations. The only other thing they mentioned was they'd like to see final construction draft if construction begins to work in the right way. They're going to separate to get a trench permit for work in the right way.
How does the person that's driving in from the north?
Drop off kids. Yeah? Yeah. They would have to either come in here and park and drop off, which most, a lot of parents do.
What entrance do they use for that? Right here. I mean, to walk in?
Uh, this entrance.
Okay.
There's only one entrance in the morning that's open, and that's this entrance right here. So right now, many of the parents just come in and park and walk their kids in. A few of them use the small turnaround, but very few. And parents that do park here, they're not allowed to turn left coming out here, so they have to use the turnaround, then go around and use the roundabout, well, it's not roundabout, the circular turn on industrial drive.
Is the tulip tree on our list of approved street trees, and is the street tree requirement triggered by this project?
I think they need it. In terms of one tree every, I think they meet it for existing trees, existing closed trees. I don't know the answer in terms of tulip. Do you know?
I'll look it up.
A tulip tree doesn't withstand tremendous urban environments. In this area, which is not quite as bad, we have a planting area underneath it that's 10 feet wide, so it's going to have quite a bit of room in order. It does withstand moderate urban environments, and we have used it in parking areas before with pretty good success. But we are willing to listen to concerns and make adjustments.
Just two things, I guess. One is, if you, I don't know how much you participated in the conversation, but I'm having trouble, as a parent who used to drop kids off at a school, about the idea of the safety of moving the drop-off area from within your boundaries to adjacent to a public street. I understand there's a pull-off, but you're still putting kids and parents and cars on a public street versus inside a parking lot. So I'm not understanding the safety decision there.
Well, we feel, one, this is an unsafe condition because there isn't room enough, and when you do drop your kid off and want to walk with them, you have to leave your car. There's a number of issues with, problem with this. Some parents actually do turn left, some don't. It's just too small and inadequate for that with the amount that the school has grown. This, we felt, there wasn't a lot of area to put one either. We couldn't push back in this direction. We did obtain a order, not an order of conditions, but a request for determination negative for the isolated wetland here. We are not allowed to increase impervious area within the buffer zone, so we're limited with that. And this was the only area that we felt had room enough in order to at least create an environment that was safer than this. I know it's on a busy street, but by pulling off and having staff waiting there, we felt it was the. The only other option.
And the second thing would be, this temporary structure seems to have a fairly permanent sidewalk, so how temporary is it?
That's a good point. The sidewalk itself was slated to be poured-in-place concrete, but we opted to go with pavers that are set on sand that can be picked up and moved and will be once this is gone. It'll be reused for other sidewalk areas. I'm not here really to speak on the future plans of the school itself, but this is a rented structure for five years. And by that time, the school's already planning on other future plans for either additional buildings or new sites or what have you.
And how many people do they estimate would use the drop-off area every morning and afternoon? Do they have an estimate on just how many vehicles?
We don't know yet because some people will still opt to just park. It can house seven cars. It's hard to guess how many might be using it.
Frandy's comment. So tulip is not on the list of accepted.
I'm sorry?
Tulip is not on the list of street trees.
Okay, I don't particularly care, but do you require this?
You do generally require it. I mean, you could accept it if, you know, Peter convinces you to do tulip, but that's general. You could accept if you want, but you usually require the trees that are in the subdivision standards.
Wayne, could I ask a question? Is sweet gum accepted?
I don't know the answer. What's there?
Black gum. Oh.
Liquid amber.
So what kind of tulip? What's the?
Lirio dendrum tulipifera.
Well, if they meet the tree requirements currently, does that give them a free pass to plant whatever they want, or it has to meet the, it has to be from the list?
Typically, we're required to be from the list. That's usually, I can't remember many occasions where it was said.
Even though this is a plaza tree, it's not really a street tree.
Well, the other question for Andy Ray is, do you have enough trees to meet, in that area, is it every 30 or 40 feet?
30.
So what's the frontage? 272 feet? So theoretically, you'd need nine trees to meet the.
So in fact, you'll need almost 10, but nine. So, I mean, it's similar to the conversation we just had with the hotel on Con Street where we made them come back and put in more trees because of the street.
We have three existing trees along Bates Avenue that are quite large that we're saving. This is a pin oak. This is a calligraphy pear. These are two, two large oaks. We're putting in this tree. There's a bunch at the corner here. I guess, I didn't see room.
Okay, I thought that was a bush. It's a little one there next to.
No, this is a tree.
That looks better.
It's still only about.
Like six. I mean, you could probably honestly say there are going to be six. One, two, three, four, five. If you count that.
There's a clump on that bottom right. Do you know how many, Peter, at the bottom right, that row of trees? How many that is?
The wetlands.
Yeah, right there.
Yeah. I would say there's nothing large in there like this, but there's probably seven or eight that are, you know, three or four or five-inch caliber. It's just a, it's woods.
Well, I mean, we could waive it if they would replace the tulip with an approved tree. We could, I mean, we could always waive the street tree requirement if we feel it's, the site doesn't require it, so.
I would urge you to drive by also, and there's quite a nice canopy from both sides at this one section.
I mean, they're like 60 feet apart.
Right, and you know, we do, you don't have, they don't have to be every 30 feet. You can have a clump of four at 120 feet, another clump of four, kind of like, you know, we do the Taco Bell.
I was just going to say that, right.
Yeah, they clumped them.
I was never happy about that.
But we can't make them put them in the wetlands, and they can't put them in the concrete, so. If we wanted to make a condition that they replace the tulip with a tree from the approved list and waive the remaining quantity.
I want to talk some more about the traffic pattern.
Sure.
So you're, you're, it seems very clear that you're going from one curb cut to two, but what you're getting for that curb cut is 120 feet of pull-off. So my 14-foot curb cut turned into, you know, I don't remember your number, but it's scaled at something like 120 feet. And it's 10 feet wide?
10 feet wide, yeah.
And so you're right next to the wetlands, and you're saying that that's not a drainage problem that you're adding to, because you have drainage problems on the property.
No, no, we're not next to the wetlands. This is 200 feet away from the wetlands. Everything drains in that direction.
That direction.
The one drainage area we have is out of this walkway. This puddles up, so it becomes mud, and it gets muddy, so we're correcting that and adding a walkway. Small puddle that's in the turnaround area.
So cars coming from your side of the property where you are will pull off and let the kids out on the school side, and then you've got transfer truck traffic within, at the edge of the next lot.
Yeah, that's roughly 120 feet down.
But they do come down Bates Avenue. I mean, we have trouble with them doing what we don't want them to do.
We have problems with that now because some parents, they, you can also park across the street. They have access to the parking area across the street, and many of the teachers park there, but some of the parents also park there and walk across Bates in the morning, and we're hoping to alleviate some of that.
I'm sorry, I don't know how many students are at the school. Does it, can you give me some?
115.
115?
Okay. Yeah, well, I mean, that puts the 44 places in scale, so that sounds right. right. I'm doubtful parents are going to pull into the parking lot and turn around if they're coming from the other direction, but.
No.
And it's better than, I mean, I can, I can see that you have more room in the parking lot than you did.
I, I think the parents that are coming from this direction won't turn around and drop off here. They're going to come in here and park and, and just drop off. There wouldn't be sense to do that, because there is quite a bit of parking. It's well above what's, what's needed. But it's that forty-five minutes in the morning and afternoon that it does get, which is what most schools run into.
Yeah.
You don't want to build a parking area for that forty-five minutes.
I understand. I mean, I just, I think people are in a hurry, and they're not going to want to get trapped in that parking lot, so they're going to turn around and, right there, and try to go back so that they don't get stuck behind other people coming in to let kids off, too, is my worry.
I don't know. I'm not sure.
Celia Pastorez, I'm on the board of the school. I've been a part of this with Peter all along. The school is preschool through sixth grade, but the bulk of the students are in the younger ages, so actually, most of the parents do park and go in and help their kids get settled. That's probably, and this is off the top of my head, that's probably sixty to seventy of the students who are in that younger age group, where the parents would definitely be going in.
Okay.
So it's the older kids that would be dropping off, of which there's right now probably forty altogether. That would be first grade through sixth grade. And even then, a lot of the first grade, second grade parents do like to go in and walk into the school. It's just as they get older, that they're more likely to be in a rush.
Do you have, can I ask more quick?
Yeah.
Do you have children who travel by bike? I don't think there's any bike racks in the story that I saw.
Yeah.
Yeah, there is.
Together.
It's a four-loop.
Thank you.
Four.
Four, what is it?
Don't people right now, our office is on North Street, but I forget what time of day it is when I mistakenly drive by the school, at drop-off or pickup, and people are parked on the lawn in front of the school now, where the drop-off is proposed.
Yes.
You know, two wheels on the road, two wheels off. And so I think what is being proposed, it's not ideal, but the, the site is not ideal, but it's better certainly than what exists now.
Okay.
And this will alleviate that.
Right, right. And so it'll be a safer condition.
Yeah.
Is there, I don't know if you looked at, I can't think of any of the public elementary schools. I think of the one that's closest to me, which is Leeds. There is a tree lawn in between the lot, drop-off lane and the, and the road, and I think that's typical, and this doesn't have that. I mean, again, this is directly on a public street, without any barrier.
Right. We, we did discuss that, and there were two constraints that we had with, with that idea. One is by pulling us in another ten feet, we would lose this tree for sure, and we might lose this tree. Not that that's the major issue, but also pulling it, putting an island here to create a buffer runs the problem of, since it is such a small drop-off area, only seven cars, if you get someone that pulls in and their, their child is having a difficult time, or they can't get them out, no one else can drive in there, so there's no way to go around that car. So it was more of that type of logistics that we were concerned about. And, and like Mark said, if you go there in the morning, people are parked everywhere on the way now, not that that's safe and correct, but this is a much safer...
No, you know, we don't want to be rewarding bad behavior.
Yep.
Can we just hear staff comments?
They've addressed most of them, and there's some specific conditions.
Better move it every year or however now, or if they have to.
But no, no outstanding concerns from planning?
No.
This is one of, I think Frandy mentioned it, you know, what makes it a temporary shelter? I mean, it's got plumbing, it's got power, it's going to be there for five years. Are there any special considerations?
You're approving it. There's no reason they couldn't keep it forever. I think it's temporary in the sense that it's a modular classroom, and they plan to replace it. But we're not suggesting any conditions, so.
Right. I mean, essentially, we should consider it to be a structure.
Correct.
Yeah.
If this was a permanent structure, would, would the discussion right now be any different as far as setbacks or anything?
No.
Then, because it's got the temporary tag, no.
Right. There's really, our, our main focus for everything you've said and DPW's said is really what's back there to some extent. Doesn't matter that much for us.
Any other questions by the board? No? Open up the public comment. Yeah. Does anyone here from the public who would like to speak on this issue? No? Want to close public comment? Or discuss?
Do you want to just, before we do, you want to just, do we, we add, do we add the condition about change the tree and?
We'll discuss it. We haven't really.
Right, so while we're still open, we should just decide what we're going to do with that.
So, I mean, so we've got nine or ten issues by the DPW, all of which have been met. So I don't know if that would be a condition, because the comments from the DPW we just received this afternoon, and then you had a quick turnaround and addressed them, but the DPW has, hasn't seen this most recent.
No.
Okay. But those are just comments by the DPW, or recommendations to begin with.
Right.
So most of those are for change. I'm going to go through the four that I have from what you talked about. So first three are from DPW directly, just that they get final construction drawings prior to any construction, primarily with what's going to happen in the right way, that the owner will provide pedestrian crossing signs to DPW that meet city standards and many uniform traffic control device standards, and they're install them, just for the crosswalk. That the owner will always be responsible for snow removal within this pull-off area and for maintaining the curb within the pull-off area. And that the, this is from you guys, that the tulip tree replaced by one of the trees within subdivision as accepted, subdivision regulations as accepted street.
And that would give us a total of one, two, three, four, five?
How many are there within that wetlands cluster?
Right, plus everything that remains, so.
Evan?
I'm, I'm fine with the tree condition, but I would just weigh in as an opinion. They, they picked a specimen tree. They, they've thought about whether it's going to do well in that location. They've got, they, they're trying to influence the, you know, front entry of their building. So I'm, I'm not, I mean, I don't have a good reason not to, you know, to oppose the tree list that we've developed, but I just think this is, to me, almost a specimen tree rather than one of the border trees we're usually talking about. I mean, I don't feel about this one the way I do about a juniper or something.
Right.
So, just an opinion.
And obviously, our trees, we're particularly interested in our trees on streets which we're going to own. That's not true.
Right.
This is a different conversation than we had with the hotel.
Yeah.
Where there's a pedestrian walkway all the way down the street. This is at the border of the industrial park.
Yeah.
Does, does the absence of enough street trees bother anybody?
No, I don't think it, it reads that way when you, when you drive by.
They're big trees.
Yeah. They're, they're mature, and they're, it's, you don't, it doesn't read as a lot of empty space.
It's not a new development, so.
Right, right.
And I don't think the surrounding, surrounding properties necessarily have trees.
Right.
Cop plan.
Right.
I would have no objection to having them put up their tulip, what is it?
Come with me, Frandy.
Liriodendron tulip refer. Pardon? Liriodendron tulip refer. That's it, that's it.
Yeah, if you can spell it, then you can make a condition.
I don't, I, I have to say, I don't like the pull-off area being on the street like that, but I'm not sure what else they could do.
Have you seen, I mean, have you driven by a drop-off? It's utterly, it's crazy.
It's crazy.
And it's really unsightly. There's just cars, every, like parked every which way, abandoned.
Well, would it, would it solve that problem, or is there going to be, are there going to be cars backed up on Bates Street all the way to, to Ridge Street, you know?
I mean, I, I think it would all...
With all that fossil fuel, huh?
I think, I, I said, I've, I've driven by and I see cars up with two wheels on the lawn, two wheels off. I see all four wheels up and parked scattered any which way they can get. I think with, with the pull-off, it will be, you know, predetermined, this is where you're going to go, and you're not going to go anywhere else, and it'll be, it'll be sustained chaos instead of just, it's, it's crazy when you drive by in the morning, and they're everywhere.
But when you have, say, someone parks in the middle and leaves their car there for whatever reason, an extended period of time, I mean, you're still, I mean, it's going to be like pulling out of parallel parking or something.
Well, people do that every day.
I mean, you know, are you really going to have those, I mean, it, again, it's, it's going to be like a parking lane on a street, to me, and I...
It is, but I think if, I forget the name of the daycare school across from the Y on Prospect.
Metalark.
Metalark. It's the same issue. There's no pull-off, there's nothing. Y parking by itself is, is horrible.
Right.
And a lot of people park across the street, and then in Metalark, forty-five minutes, you know, early and late afternoon, same thing, and so there's, there's no pull-off. It's, it's dangerous.
Can there be, I mean, I'm not sure if we can, we can't have, put a sign there that says, "No parking." It's just, what do they have an airport?
Drop-off only.
Drop-off only.
Signs down here, pickup and drop-off only. There will be teachers there, as I mentioned, bringing kids in. Parents are not supposed to stop and get out and walk their kids in in this area, so we're trying to force that, and so they're parked, are not parked there. And they are moving. And the learning process will, will occur.
I thought it was said that the majority of kids are of an age where their parents will want to park and drop them in.
Yeah, and, and for this area.
Right, so drop-off only for the older kids. The younger kids, they won't park there, they'll go into the parking lot.
Peter, do we have on the plans, that thing about those signs?
Yeah, let's see our plans.
About the signs?
No, no drop-off.
We don't have, oh, oh. We don't have that yet, but you can make that a condition. We're obviously going to try and, we find as best possible to... So there aren't any questions? Well, I, I mean, I think it's, it's going to help get people drop off their kids safely. It's not going to solve the problem of people parking everywhere.
Right.
It's still going to be a mess.
But it should improve it.
Right. Won't solve it, but I think it'll make it better.
So we're going to have the condition about the side?
Okay, now, would you like me to move to close the public area? I move to close the public area?
Second.
And for pickup and drop-off.
Second gen, all in favor? So we have one, two, three, four, five potential conditions. So all the recommendations from the DPW have been met. Staff recommends final drawings before, what was the condition before?
So final construction drawings before any work in the road right away.
Before any work, okay. Pedestrian crossing signs, snow removal within the turn, within the cutout, the tulip tree, we're going to waive that condition, and drop-off signage.
And just, the snow removal, the snow removal, and also curb maintenance.
Right.
Is there a...
I have a referent site plan for a building, extended curb cut and drop-off to the neutral school, and you have Hampton fifty-one Bates Street and Hampton MAP ID twenty-five A dash eighty-six.
Six with conditions?
Did we close the area?
Uh-huh.
Frandy?
Frandy, then Jen, second.
Second is the copier.
Second, and, okay. All in favor? All opposed? One, two, three, four, five, six, two, one, John, post. Okay, thank you, Peter.
What's that? Yeah.
Yeah, for John, post.
What's that? My phone.
What happened to, he came in for a little bit.
Missed it.
You are up. Next up, slated for seven-thirty tonight is a major site plan for a four thousand seven hundred and eighty square foot medical office addition at Seventy Main Street in Florence, MAP ID twenty-three A dash seven-zero.
Good evening. My name is Matt McDonough, and I'm manager of Middle Hampshire Development Group, who owns about seventy Main Street, as well as a couple of abutting properties, and our tenant is the Valley Medical Group. Building is thirteen thousand, existing building is thirteen thousand three hundred and seventy-three square feet. Built nineteen eighty-one, and the addition is really just to expand the uses that have been crammed, for want of a better word, into this building, and also we're using the opportunity to comply with the new building codes and the changing method of delivery of services by our tenant to upgrade the building. The upgrades will include new electrical service, larger gas service, and fire, fire protection shrinker system, as well as pole boxes, strobes, and, you know, hardwired smoke alarms. The addition is contemplated at four hundred, four thousand seven hundred and eighty feet, which will bring a total, new, a total building of eighteen thousand one hundred and fifty-three feet. This proposal does not contemplate, because we added parking about six years ago, this proposal does not contemplate a number of the typical accoutrement to a development of this size, in that we are not changing the curb cut, we're not changing the parking, we're not changing the landscaping. We're really taking a, a small, existing parking area and a small lawn that had been, had a trailer on it for about six years, and, and that's where the addition is going. This is the existing building, and the addition, it just extends back here via sympathetic construction materials, brick and, and precast concrete panels, and it very much looks like the existing building that closes around. The, here is the, the site from Main Street, here's the existing building, here's the complete addition. This is parking that we constructed about six years ago. This is staff parking, which really dramatically frees up parking for clients. We also own these two parcels, but we're not using those parcels as part of this presentation because they're not needed at this time. The packets that get given to the U.S. Department and to this board speaks to the parking that we have existing, a hundred and three spaces, and required is only ninety-two. So we're losing, that does not include the ones, we're losing about six spaces back here. This is the existing now. There's a small parking area here, and that trailer is there. That goes away, parking area goes away, and the addition fits right here. We have a four metric plan that, plan staff had noticed, actually, we didn't, that the four metric plan did not address, it, three wall packs, and we definitely threw them. This revised plan, which I have multiple copies of for the board, has been amended, so it shows that there's, the light doesn't bleed off on real estate. Just as a note, for those of you who've been out there, this is the fire station, and while we have lighting in this lot, and existing lighting here, and our lighting doesn't go on to our neighbor's property, there's enormous amount of light shed. I mean, it's, it's great, we, we, ours is good as zero at the border. It's a lot of income, which is okay. Again, they're, they're great neighbors, and that's not a problem, good story. This is the, the actual addition. Here's Main Street, here's the engine, none of that changes. The driving patterns in this site don't change whatsoever, because back here, where there's parking, and that remains so, and the addition, side gut setbacks are the same as existing, and none of that changed. So, well, this is a major project, right? Which is okay. Again, they're great neighbors and, uh, problem, next door to you. This is the, uh, the actual addition. Here's, uh, Main Street, here's the entrance, none of that changes. The driving patterns in this site don't change whatsoever, uh, because back here where there's parking, and that remains so. And the addition, side gut setbacks are the same as existing, and none of that changed. So, well, this is a major project, right? What definition it is, uh, it doesn't, uh, it doesn't demand a lot of the, uh, you know, a lot of the issues that are, uh, major projects elsewhere in this town where, uh, the address doesn't, uh, it's not indicated because we, we did the parking six years ago to handle that. This is my third project before this committee in the last 15 years, and I think the other two have been really good, and I think that, uh, we expect this one to go as smooth as the other two. The first being the redevelopment of, uh, 1999, we redeveloped the building laundry property into a medical office space at 118 Con Street. And, uh, that, that project went well, and that was a lot more complicated than this is anticipated to be. And also, I have a principle in a company that is redeveloping the Pro Rush complex at 296 Non-Itex Street, and that also has gone really well. And I think departments with, with which we interact, mostly building department, are very pleased with that development. So I think I have a pretty good track record with this, and Rocket Building Company, who will be our builder on this project, has done a lot of medical space for us, and we have a great level of confidence in them. They've done a fair amount of work in North Hampton as well.
Any questions? That's done.
Will you do the parking numbers for me? I got, uh, you have 92.
And you have?
103.
Right.
That's what you have, and it goes down to 92.
No, no, required is 92. Losing the six that we're gonna lose, still 103, I didn't count those.
That helps my math.
Okay.
I'm okay with the project. Parking is my only concern about this. Not really for this particular building, but it is because I have sat through a reunion after meeting, after meeting about Main Street and parking.
Problems created by another medical building in town, so...
I'm aware of that, and I, and, you know, when we had the opportunity, uh, seven years ago, to purchase the 77 and 81 Maple Street, uh, we held our nose, and we did, it was very expensive. But it was really a problem. We were renting space from, uh, Ms. Warren Steiner and, you know, uh, but it was clear that, uh, long-term, we had to solve that problem. We were very thankful we did, and I think it's just the proof of the pudding tonight.
So this is a major site plan because of the parking requirements, but they already meet the parking requirements because of what they did several years ago?
So, I'm not sure I understood your question and your answer. Have the parking issues on Main Street been addressed, or they're, they're still ongoing?
It's not really this building's problem, but I'm sensitized to the, the, the effect of, uh, what you don't want is you don't want a facility to take it, to encourage its staff to park in the neighborhood because they don't have enough parking, and then to free up your parking capability for your clients. And I use this building, I, that's not been my experience of it, but I just, that's my only, that's the only thing I've learned is about parking, that, you know, you just, uh, it's, it's certainly been an issue in Florence. This, you know, you can see Middle Street on the, on the plans here, but it's not, and, and that's the street that has been most upset about the on-street parking. But I don't believe it's come from this building, because there's usually space in this building.
Right.
Yes.
And I think, and I think it goes to what you said, I didn't know the history of it, but I think it's from biting the bullet some time ago.
Yes, and, and the lot on, uh, at 77, uh, Maple Street is staff parking, it's a card-key access, and, uh, that really has freed up, with no, uh, all the pressure is really gone. And anytime of day and night, I've been really following it more closely as this project evolved, there's always ample parking, so much so that Florence Pizza gets some freebies at lunch. People that hit the wrong driveway. But, uh, so, we're, we're comfortable with that aspect of it. And we're excited about the project because of, you know, it's gonna, the building is tired, and it needs a, needs a substantial shot, you know, on which this project will accomplish.
So similar to the conversation we just had with Montessori?
192 feet of frontage, and I don't see any trees. I'm not sure what the plantings are. They show one, two, three, four small shrubs.
Well, let me explain the plantings, uh, the existing. We purchased the building in 19, uh, 19, uh, 2001, I'm sorry. I don't know if you recall, but the front of the building had this hill from the face of the building right to the sidewalk. It had all this ivy and it was really junky, and people had full of coffee cups and whatever. And we removed it because it was buggy and it was, it was a water problem in the building, and we found out it was, it was loaded, it was this tall, it was loaded with construction debris from 1981. So we took out 300 yards of stuff and planted grass and has planting. So the whole front of the building, since, uh, 2002, has had a nice belt of planters, long, um, tree street, and then there's a, a, a very 20-foot belt of grass from the sidewalk and, and, and there's trees all around, and, uh, there's a, I think that the, on this plan that you have, there's a calculation on green space as well. I believe it's, uh, in excess of.
It's not so much a, a green space issue or a plantings issue, or the fact that it isn't as much improved than it was early 2000s, but because of the site plan, it triggers the necessity, or couldn't trigger the necessity of a certain quantity of trees along the street, so...
Right, so in general business, there's, um, if a building is at the set, at the property line, there's no street tree requirement, but otherwise, there will be one for 30, and I, I, um, didn't catch that. So if you, at the, at this point, it would be appropriate, you know, if it makes sense, to enhance the tree count.
There are four now along the street.
Okay.
Two on either side of the driveway, like mine would be.
Trees or shrubs?
No, this is trees, they're in the tree belt.
So we don't have that drawing?
Uh, yeah, this is, uh, this is a drawing.
The second page.
This doesn't identify.
Right. So it looks like they just started to do six.
102?
Plus 64.
You're just, you're gonna add more trees?
I know, I understand, I understand. We're happy to do that. I mean, those trees are, are actually, this town is trees, they're in the tree. Are they not?
Uh, they could be, but it, it, um, either, they could be in, requirement is along the street.
I see.
So it could be in the belt or it could be on your property.
257. I said seven, but there's four on the cur, on the street line, there's two in, uh, like, equal to the face of the building, and then there's a tree, uh, in the grassy area towards the entrance.
The one at the entrance and in the parking lot wouldn't count, but, so by that total frontage would be eight trees would be required.
Got four. Right, so you need four more.
I'm gonna say, use tree belt on the street line where the others are typically.
You could, or you could cluster them as well, or stagger them.
I think I'm not putting trees near our roofs, so.
Sightlines coming in and out of the property, there is an advantage to not space them all out.
Right.
Right.
Which isn't a requirement, it's just the quantity, right.
Like, we could probably shade the trees, no pun intended, over towards the, uh, the west side, so it wouldn't impede the sightlines. Over, over this way a little bit, just so that you have a good shot of them.
Yeah, because there's no, it's not as if they're gonna block an entrance, because the entrance is in the parking lot, so...
Yeah, the entrance road kind of divides the building and the...
Right.
So, would make the condition four street trees from the approved planting plan?
Go down sweet.
Yeah, that's right.
That was one, a condition that was discussed. The other was the revised light plan that you have, which addresses the third wall pack.
I have, uh, I have lots of copies.
Four trees.
Just planted four more of those.
I know it.
Might be the fire station.
How do you?
It's like point two and a couple point two, point ones. It's that one.
Is that third, so that's, that wall pack is for safety?
Third one that was, yeah.
Oh, here, the fire station is here. Yeah, there it is.
This building over to the, uh, staff parking, so really, that's just kinda, that's a...
So is that on a photo?
If this was not the fire department, this would be a dark corner, that's pretty well lit.
Is that on a photo cell or a time clock or?
Uh, they're usually on the clock.
Oh, so then it won't be on 24 hours a day?
No, as I said, if you go over here, it's pretty bright.
Right.
Just generally.
But for the sake of argument, if the, if the fire station didn't exist, those three wall packs are on, on a timer, so at 10 o'clock at night, or whatever the time is, they all go off?
Correct.
Okay.
Their hours generally.
Any other comments? Open up for public? Yes, if you, so I'll sit with you guys. If you want to, ma'am, step up and just give your name and address?
The butter to, yes, Fisher. Gertrude Fisher is my legal name. And I'm the butter to 53 Middle Street, which, uh, abuts the, um, Valley Medical, and then across the projected parking lot, where it was all marked off where, um, John's linoleum, and then the little building next to it was torn down. So our concern is exactly what the setbacks are going to be from the property line, because there's nothing there now up there in vacant lot. I think I called, so, I don't know if this concerns this meeting or not.
I'm not proposing anything on that side.
So you're not gonna do anything? Well, that's why I wanted to know.
That's just every meeting.
Yeah, that's why I wanted to know.
This, this proposed addition for tonight's hearing doesn't affect those parcels that you're talking about?
Okay, so, uh, but could you tell me, though, how mu, uh, how many feet are concerned? Because I talked to Mr. McDonough before about, you know, plantings and things in the future.
It's a, it's a 50-foot addition? 50-foot addition?
Well, we're going 50-foot that way, yes.
Right, so...
And it abuts exactly to, um...
No, I think, there's an issue of confusion here. The parcel that, that she is describing is this parcel. We're not proposing anything on this parcel.
Right, that's, there's, so there's nothing happening.
Nothing happening there.
Right.
So it's just gonna stay vacant for now?
Right, again, tonight's hearing...
If you do there, we have to go back to the board.
Right. Tonight's hearing is just on the addition in the back, which doesn't affect that parcel in any way, and they couldn't do that without, again, back to the board.
But just for my information, though, I would like to know, um, if the parking lot is joining residential property, how many steps feet is there for a setback? Is there a special guideline?
I'm not sure I follow the, the existing parking lot, is it changing physically, the, the parameters of the parking lot?
Right.
I think the question is, what is the zoning guideline for, in general?
If 63 and a half, if 63 and a half Maple Street were to be redeveloped, and that's not the topic of tonight's conversation.
I understand.
That's the question.
There's a, they're typically between, uh, or the zoning requires that between, um, a commercial district and a residential district, that there's a 30-foot
Right.
planted buffer, that the planning board can reduce to 20. Um, so in, in this case, the, um, the, or, and if there's, um, they can do that if there's a fence there. There's currently a fence and landscaping as the buffer between this parcel under, which is under review in front of you now, and the abutting parcel. Um, but the same buffer requirements would apply to, um, any use on that other parcel that's not part of this permit review tonight.
Okay, that, that was my question. Because it's just barren. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak on this issue? Yes?
My name's Josh Rickman. I'm here for the Pioneer Valley Planting Commission on behalf of Pioneer Valley Transit Authority. Just making sure we're using the same entrance and exit for our paratransit vehicles?
Yes, in fact, uh, uh, four or five years ago, we actually gave permission to Pioneer Valley Transit Authority to put, yeah, a shelter on our property, and that's not gonna change.
Nothing's gonna change, nothing like that. Great, thank you so much.
Any other comments? Second gen, all in favor? Some discussion? So we... The two, well, one condition we have are for the four additional trees per the planting plan, or the approved shade tree plan. Second were, were the concerns on the lighting layout, so we're, we're going off the revised one that was issued tonight, which reflects, it's not zero at the perimeter, but if they're all on a schedule, if they're all on a timer, and if they're off, why not?
Well, you might want to put that as a condition, that the lights go up, be turned off at nine.
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Somebody wanna make a motion? Does that affect?
You want, you want the motion to approve the permit with those conditions?
Yeah. Your last for us, Steven?
I move that we approve the major site plan, 4,780 square foot medical office addition at 70 Main Street, Florence, MAP ID 23A-70, with listed condition.
Okay, and the conditions were, again?
The conditions were the addition, four additional trees, and the wall packs, the three lights on the exterior of the building are off at nine o'clock. So I need a second.
Second?
Second gen, all in favor? Okay, thank you.
You're gonna, you're gonna put a fence up?
Ow, good stuff. Okay, next up, scheduled for 7:30, a little late, a continuation of a public hearing on proposed zoning changes to URA, B, and C districts, and the modifications to section 6.8. Do you want to walk us through?
Yeah, so the, the public hearing, um, May 13th, there was, um... Yeah, so the, the public hearing, May 13th, there was, you know, a lot of discussion about the bulk of the zoning package. And the reason why it was continued was because at a previous city council subcommittee meeting, economic development, land use, councillor Freeman Daniels had proposed a modification to urban residential C to include a special permit provision for any new construction of, of a project that included seven or more either multifamily units or townhouse units. And because that was a standard that is not currently in the regulations for urban residential C and certainly wasn't advertised, we needed to advertise that as because it's a more stringent standard than the, than the existing situation. And so that's the, why the, that public hearing was continued. And the ordinance committee continued theirs as well, but their meeting is June 10th. So instead of closing on a certain portion of the package, it made sense to sort of carry everything forward and let this one proposed amendment that had to be advertised catch up in essence, so that you all could review the whole thing again and make your final recommendation to city council. So there's been a lot of discussion about whether, you know, there were, actually at that meeting as well, there were sort of a couple pockets of residents from mostly two neighborhoods that were raising concerns about, about the zoning and whether or not their neighborhood should be taken out of urban residential C. And so this amendment is sort of almost a compromise to say, okay, there was this concern that when multiple units are proposed, that's when neighborhoods get concerned about wholesale changes within the block or the neighborhood. So this is a mechanism to help address that. And so it certainly would be staff recommendation that it makes sense as opposed to looking at remapping, you know, different areas of urban residential C in particular. Staff looked at the recommendation from the councillor and thought that it would be prudent to also add that special permit criteria for urban residential B as well, because their townhouse units are allowed in B. So it sort of makes sense to mirror that in B. So in front of you is, and what was advertised, is a minor modification to both B and C to, to include a special permit provision for that. So that's sort of where we are. There were a couple of, we also got, one of the zoning revisions committee members had quickly reviewed this and made a couple of comments that I think are valid to modify, just for clarification, adding, clarifying that the lot dimension standards are the minimum dimension standards required, as sort of at the header. And then also clarifying this issue of how we allow setbacks for garages that are closer to side property boundaries than residential structures, which is the current standard now. We allow, you can, you can bring your garage, if it's attached to the house, that component of the house can be closer to a side property line than 15 feet if it's only used for garage, storage, or workshop space. And it wasn't, I guess, it wasn't, he felt that it wasn't clear that, that parking cars and storage are treated equally. So I think adding just the word that, that provision for a 10-foot side setback is, is for the purposes of storing vehicles and other items or workshop space.
What if we also said it was not to be used as living space? I mean, isn't that the real?
Yeah, that's, that's true. So that's another way to look at it.
Right.
Yep.
Can I ask for the clarification on what the rule currently is for, is detached from?
It's, can be four feet from the property line at the side and the rear. It still needs to be 15 feet from the front lot line.
And with regard to what Frandy just said, can it be resident, could somebody live in?
No, and that's the distinction that's currently on the books. You can't, so you're allowed, if it's just, you know, a storage or workshop space and it's detached, it can be much closer to the property boundary. For a living space, it's always been the standard that it meets the same setback as a principal structure. However, there was this, at some point added this modification that maybe you could get a little bit closer if you sign an affidavit that'll only be used for storage and you'll never convert it to a living space.
Question, second gen?
Um, what, who came up with the number seven and why?
The councillor came up with seven and.
He's not here to present his proposal tonight?
No, I think, in fact, at the public hearing, he indicated that, you know, he was hearing, hearing a lower number from some constituents, but at the same time, understanding that there are many, many five-unit and six-unit properties in the urban residential C district. And so he felt like it needed to be more than five or six and that he was comfortable with seven as sort of, I don't know.
It was a balance. He just said it was a balance.
Yeah, right.
My concern about the Freeman, Owen Freeman Daniels, about his amendment is that it seems to be sold as a way to block the further development, but a special permit can easily be granted and it might put us in the political arena. We would approach it from a planning standpoint. And the neighbors might think that this is some way to block larger quantities of townhouses. And I don't think it's gonna work for that.
Hopefully they're listening.
Pardon?
Hopefully they're listening.
It makes, it does raise the bar. It's a higher bar to clear than the special.
Yeah, but there's hardly any guarantee that the planning board would not approve it.
That's true. But we also have a lot more discretion when we do approve it.
He actually argued he was pretty comfortable with the way it was. He was simply trying to make the constituents more comfortable.
Right, but I think you're right. It's not only is it, it's, it's, it has a couple of, I think, more protective measures than, than it otherwise would without the special permit. And that is, when people see special permit, sometimes they're afraid to even apply because they know that those can be appealed and that it would in the very least delay a project. And so it might turn people away that we might not even see come forward because they see, well, seven is special permit. And the other thing, of course, is it does take a two-thirds vote of the board. So it's not just a simple majority. So that's part of the, the concern, certainly from an applicant standpoint, that they need to get more votes.
That's right, I also forgot about the appeal. The appeal process is, is much easier to appeal a special permit than a site plan.
No, other.
No, it's much easier, you can appeal a special permit, site plan.
Right.
They're almost impossible to appeal.
Technical.
To turn over, yeah, to reverse, yeah.
The look plan, the appeal thing won't change, but there is a zoning reform law before. The legislature, as there has been every year for decades, I don't really know if it's gonna change.
This one seems like a greater chance.
It's the end before. And that will change the vote from the majority to majority.
On a special permit?
Depending on city council, the city council has to accept that, but yes.
I guess maybe going back to Frandy's comment, and it seems that we've worked, especially all of you, more than I have, but I mean, we've all worked very hard to get this package. And it seems like it's taking it and trying to address the needs of a very specific group of constituents versus, you know, the idea of trying to do this across the entire city. And I guess, I just worry, are you, are we creating a point or a fissure or whatever? I mean, that, this could be, you know, be the beginning of finding wedges between and start, you know, are we defeating our own purpose in some sense by, before we even implemented it, we've said, oh, and then here's a, you know, we're gonna alter it, you know, in this way that creates a special class for a special place because of constituent, I mean, so I don't know. It just, like you said, I mean, do we want people not to apply because they're scared off by the, I mean, no. I'd rather have them apply and then tell them, well, I'm sorry, you don't need, or whatever. But I mean, I, I don't know, I worry about discouraging people and we never, we never know what we've missed because they never come to us.
Right. I mean, I guess there is that, there is that piece. I think the other piece is the nature of trying to make changes to zoning is it gets massaged as it, as it works its way through. And this is, these represent significant changes beyond what has been changed for many years and in, you know, the spirit of sustainable North Hampton. But the other piece is, we can try, we try many times to do things incrementally. So if this is the first step and we can work on it, live with it and see what happens and what percolates and what doesn't, and, you know, maybe come back and address it later. But from our, from staff perspective, I think trying to work out those compromises as it, as it goes through makes sense so that we can get to a place where our zoning really matches better what's in the neighborhood as opposed to having it all fail just on a, you know.
You don't want to lose it for just a relatively small base.
Seems like in, in two years, we've had, it's been, there hasn't been a lot of pushback. There's been a lot of education on, on just what it is that's being proposed and why it's being proposed and what it represents really truly on the street and what it means to a particular neighborhood. And once that understanding came across, again, there wasn't a lot of pushback. And not that this was pushback, but this is one issue that came up. And I think in a good faith effort to get this whole thing moving forward, that I don't think it's unreasonable to address it.
Well, and also there was, you know, five years ago, when we were having public meetings about this, at the beginning of our meeting, we explained the process and that the ZRC and the planning board don't enact zoning. We recommend zoning, but eventually all zoning changes are a political decision. And it's the city council's responsibility for enacting them. So for a city councillor, this is part of their process that they're gonna go through that hopefully they will make it so they can sign off on something. It's really taken five years just to get to where you're at.
Want to hear from our public?
Okay.
Come on up, Bill.
Name it a lot of water. You know, I suppose this is kind of like the 11th inning, but a couple of people in the neighborhood. I live at 43 Eastern Ave in North Hampton. I just retired as the deputy fire chief. But a few people in the neighborhood of Eastern Avenue have asked me to just talk real quickly about how I feel about the, the, building on compromised infrastructure. And what I'll do for a few minutes is, or a minute, I'll back up a little bit. Fall of 2009, I was tasked with doing a fire threat assessment of Ward Three, given its history by Chief Duggan. In addition to the water, assessing water supply, high hazard occupancy, occupancy and special hazards, and looking at the threat of the Ward Three, one of the additional threats I was told to look at was the stormwater infrastructure and how it could not handle heavy water during thunderstorms, impeding egress and access. Recently, this has come more apparent with multiple sinkholes that have started to form in some of the infrastructure down in Ward Three in the drainage systems. I met with the DPW, I did talk to them. They said they're gonna do their best to get down into certain areas to repair the, the sinkholes, but they said that they can't repair the lines themselves because it's just too expensive and they just don't have the funding. So again, I just retired, so Chief Duggan doesn't know I'm here. He'd shoot me if he, if I didn't come before I don't. I know this is probably kind of 11th inning, but, you know, I figured in good faith, I better come down and just say, as the deputy fire chief, the issue that we had was the water system. The drainage system just couldn't handle it. And we were in situations where we couldn't get the fire trucks, the ambulances especially, because the fire trucks can get, take a little bit more water. They couldn't get this down a lot of the side streets. And I'm not sure how taking out of the footprint, you know, makes that so that does not make it worse, especially if you have compromised infrastructure where you have sinkholes forming. We have the pictures of them now and the whole bit. They say they're gonna try and get to them, but you know, you do so much with the funding that they have.
The to-do list for the DPW is a, is a long one.
It's very long. I understand it. Certain areas where we are in Ward Three, it's not right on the main road, but, you know, we have the documentation to show that the vehicles couldn't get down certain roads during high water. And I, I've had neighbors say that if they are able to build, they'll take out of the footprint and add to the water system. I've talked to Doug McDonald about it. You can only do so much, but so that's.
Could you refresh my memory where Eastern Avenue is?
Eastern Ave is where all the fires were in 2009. Williams Street.
Run from what street?
Hollywood Terrace.
Okay.
College Church, right down the end.
Okay.
It's, it's just an old part of the city with old pipes.
Oh, yeah.
And it's just become, water like this isn't a problem. It's when you get a thunderstorm. You get all that water at once into the city and it just can't handle it. And the trucks can't get through. And then what do you do? We've had to do emergency egresses of numerous properties down there. Tell the people to get their vehicles out, either that or they're gonna be submerged.
Okay.
Thank you. If, if I walked the avenue, would I be able to see the sinkhole?
Of course. Well, you'd walk down Eastern Ave and you'd take a right down by the dyke.
Yep.
You'd have to actually, they're kind of like grown in. The city said that they're gonna try and get to fixing them. They found one last year because they run the cameras through and they found it. And when they were down there, then they started finding more sinkholes. But they, they just don't have the funding to replace the piping.
So they're running the pigs through the pipes and then they find that the.
Right, they find.
And that's what's causing the sinkhole?
Say that again?
The pipe is broken and that's what's causing the sinkhole?
Right, right. You can actually stick the shovel down through the ground. And then when they get down there, then they go another 10 feet and they find another one. And what they said was, well, we're gonna try and fix where the break is, but they just said we can't fix more pipes because we just don't have the money. And I understand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What kind of pipes are these, sewer or water?
Sewer, stormwater.
It's all stormwater?
Right. Now, there are areas, even at the underpass, where we got North Street, we get a really hard rain at underpass momentarily, but it'll fill up and you can't go, you can't go through.
We've had the same complaint of a Long Bridge Road.
Down the street behind the high school as well.
So I, I mean, I, I understand and agree with the issue. I don't know that the proposed zoning changes will add, necessarily add to that, to worsen that effect.
It's impermeable. That's just a question of how fast it goes down, not making.
Yeah, I think one of the problems is that most of the development would be small projects that don't trigger the stormwater permit process. Normally.
They still have to address their own onsite stormwater. Even if they don't need a stormwater permit.
Okay, so theoretically, it would improve the situation for places.
Or at least not, theoretically, at least not make it worse.
Part of the issue, of course, is globally, if a home is there on an existing street, it's gonna have less impact that they are forced to go out to Ward Six and Seven and build new roads.
Right. Okay, any other comments?
So are we talking about the overall amendment, just that amendment or the overall recommendations for?
So we, so what, what I would recommend is, so if, if ordinance can take this up on June 10th, they would only close it if they have your recommendation. So they could close it and then potentially move it to city council for the June 20th meeting for first reading after the budget reading.
So do you need this, you need the?
I don't know.
Are we voting only on Owen's amendment or?
No, you would have to close, you would close the discussion, the public hearing on everything and make a recommendation on everything. And you could incorporate the proposed amendment into your recommendation. And then I would recommend those other modifications about clarifying minimum. And then I would recommend those other modifications about clarifying minimum lot dimensions and, um, the garage being not, not living space.
Steve, I know you did the last one, but it's only fitting.
This is a nice one to go on, huh?
Well, there's two, so we're going to, we're going to...
Right.
Motion to close, we have to motion to close the public hearing.
Right.
And then we need the motion to recommend to city council, propose zoning changes to URA, B, and C, with modifications to section 6A, and then also with the changes for seven or more units in URA and B, or B and C, and then, okay.
Right.
It cannot be converted into living space. Right, I'll do the, well, I'll start with that. I move that we close the public hearing, um, on the changes to URA, B, and C.
What if somebody wants to say something?
Well, that's, you can, that's why I made the motion, you can deny it.
Second by John, all in favor?
I...
You've been leaving out the discussion period.
There's, no.
Yeah.
No, no, when, when you say...
Any discussion?
When it's moved to second, then you say, is there any discussion? That's all. You've been skipping that part.
No.
And the reason I'm saying that is, coming up...
All right, I move that we recommend to the city council, the proposed zoning changes to URA, URB, and URC with modifications to section 6A, including the, uh, addition for URC and URB for the special permit is being required for multifamily or townhouse projects containing seven or more units, and the change to accessory structures, there's a garage.
Garage, uh, garages.
Garages.
To clarify.
Garages. And that's the last one? That's the last part?
And, yeah, and just adding the minimum lot dimension requirement.
Oh, and add the minimum, the, those are the wording changes. Yeah, the minimum lot requirement changes.
Sir?
Second, second in, discussion?
I changed my mind.
Well, the only thing I'm going to say is, at one point, just before we vote on it, this has been five years of the sustainability committee, to the ZRC, to the planning board, to public meetings, to the city council, back to the planning board. It has been a long time, and I think a lot of thought and a lot of energy's gone into it, and Carolyn's probably been at more meetings than just about anybody on this whole process. So I think, you know, after five years, it's nice to see it finally getting a chance to go to city council, so...
It's been interesting, too. It hasn't, to me, it hasn't gone up and down and up and down. After that first wave of discussion review, it, it, the discussion narrowed quickly, and then we've been in this thin little area that we've been talking about and talking about and tweaking, but it's been much more tweaking than wholesale, changes to what was first initially discussed.
Well, and I thought we were almost there when we were reviewing tables, but...
Two years ago?
No, up until we quit reviewing tables, but I really think we've come a long way with that.
Right.
I mean, I think that's a, it's a much cleaner presentation.
I'm not entirely comfortable with the moves on changes, and I don't, I mean, they, not that I'm against change or anything, but they are, some of them are pretty significant changes. Um, but I will go along with it, since due to the superior skill and wisdom, Mr. Gilson and others, I'll probably go along with it.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. We're done discussing after five years? All in favor? Here we go.
Should be interesting to see what happens in city council.
Still got a while to go.
Okay, we have one other item, and that's the trees for Lea Kia.
Yes, so you all, um, got in your email, I can refresh your memory if you need, um, but an issue that came up that I don't know, Hall got missed before, if the utility polls got changed, and I don't know if anybody got a chance to go out to King Street, but those utility lines are right there where they were going to plant the trees, and I really would have to agree with the consult, the engineer, to say that those tall trees will not work. We don't want any more U-shaped trees on King Street. So my recommendation would be to allow the selection of an alternative tree that's a much lower growing, but that might actually be healthy and not chop apart.
So moved.
As someone who has had, I don't know, I, yeah, I had a pear tree in front of my house that I, I don't know if sure, it was the power company, the cable company, who did it?
It was like this?
Well, it was a nice triangular tree, and they came and cut it, and they basically took a notch. It looked like an, hell, it was horrible. So, yeah, I'm very happy.
I've got an evergreen that goes like that.
Yeah.
That's, that's the way my pear tree looked.
Are we leaving it up to them, or have they recommended what?
No, I think it was a hawthorn that I've...
Oh, that's right.
Two, six, so they had the species, and they would still plant two and a half caliber, but it's going to be a shorter when they plant it.
And hawthorns are on the list?
Um, they are not, because they're not, they're not full shade trees, but...
Oh.
That's the point is, there's nothing in there.
There's no...
There's hawthorn streets all over the world, and I don't even know what a hawthorn looks like.
I should have voted.
Disappointed that Mr. Forrest will be here.
Some in Child Park.
Okay.
That narrows it down.
Kind of hoping the applicant would come.
There's only 100 trees.
For your bon voyage?
Always love talking trees.
Was that just sort of consensus, or do we have to vote on it?
No, I'd like to see about...
Yeah, need a motion to approve six hawthorn trees.
So moved.
Okay.
Second in, all in favor? And I believe that concludes Mr. Stephen Gilson's.
Did anyone bring the gold watch?
I think of being sad that Stephen's leaving, I think we should be happy that we're fortunate enough to serve.
Oh, thank you. He just wants a Christmas tree. Well, it has been a lot of fun. I'll miss all of you. Forty Kopee.
We're not going anywhere.
Rarely.
I really like...
Is that the color of the leaves or that?
General fifteen up on the...
We can put it out in the back room with World War II flow.
Should we get a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
All in favor? Leading adjourned.